I'd like to welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's efforts to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary during the meeting. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
City Attorney, Doctor?
Here.
City Manager Burton?
Here.
Commissioner Logan?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Shirtliff?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Here.
And Mayor Collins was online, but I do not see him at this moment, so for the record, Mayor Collins is excused.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, we have had the minutes for the September 25th, 2023 Commission Meeting provided to us. Are there any changes to those minutes? Okay, seeing none, they'll stand as submitted. First item is we have the Consent Agenda. Item A, Claims. Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Commissioner. Tonight, we have claims to be recommended to move to approve for claims paid between August 29th, 2023 through September 29th, 2023, checks numbered 195884 through 196479, in addition to 16 ACH payments for a grand total of $4,999,445.31. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Is there any Commission comments? Seeing none, is there any public comment? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Protem.
Commissioner Logan?
I would move to accept the Consent Agenda Item Claims.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
I apologize, Mayor Protem. Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Next item on the agenda is Bid Award. Community Facilities Bid Award for the Law and Justice Center Pillar Building Re Roof Project Number CF3916. Superintendent?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. Troy Sampson, Community Facilities Director. Tonight, I am bringing before you a bid for award to replace the roof of the south building of the Law and Justice Center, known as the Pillar Building, located at 406 Fuller Avenue. For those attending tonight that may not know, the Law and Justice Center is jointly owned by the City of Helena and Lewis Clark County. The City Community Facilities Department manages the maintenance, capital improvements, and all renovations for this facility. The Law and Justice Center was purchased in December of 2018 and was purchased in an as-is condition. A facility assessment was performed in November of 2021, and as a result, a report was created to assist us with capital outlay items such as the roof system. The pillar building roof is the oldest of all the roofs on this facility, but we are unsure of exactly when the current roof was installed. The engineers who performed that assessment stated that the roof is in poor condition and recommended replacement in 2022. Bids for the re-roof project were opened and read aloud at 2:00 PM local time on August 14th in Room 326 of the City-County Building. Two bids were submitted. Baker &amp; Sons Roofing Incorporated of Helena in the amount of $145,646, and Summit Roofing Incorporated of Helena in the amount of $257,600. The award is based on the lowest responsible cumulative base bid plus any added alternate schedule the city determines to include with this project, which there were none. City staff believe the base bid submitted by Baker &amp; Sons Roofing is fair and reasonable. If the Commission decides to proceed with award of this project, staff recommends awarding Baker &amp; Sons Roofing Incorporated for the base bid price of $145,646. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Are there questions or comments from the Commission?
Mayor Protem.
Commissioner Logan.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson, the project timeline, should this be awarded?
Yes, Mayor Protem, Commissioner Logan. Timeline for this project, because we're heading into fall and winter, so we will award this bid, we would be looking at a spring timeframe for actual re-roof with estimated ending date of June 15th.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Sampson, I do have one question. What will be the lifespan of this new roof once the project's completed?
Mayor Protem, the new roof system that has been designed, is it a 30-year roof system?
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the Commission? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Madam Clerk?
Mayor Protem, I have no public comment online.
Okay, any final discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Protem?
Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Shirtliff?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move to award the Law and Justice Center Re Roof Project Number CF3916 to the lowest responsive bidder, Baker &amp; Sons Roofing, Inc., in the amount of $145,646.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Aye.
And I do believe Mayor Collins is online again. Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Hello, Mayor Collins. Nice to see you.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, great. We will go ahead and move on to communications and proposals from Commissioners. Any comments from any of the Commission? Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Unfortunately, we didn't have time to move this forward for agenda consideration tonight, but I believe the mayor and I received an email from a member of the Working Group on the Emergency Housing Task Force suggesting that it might be worth our consideration to bring in a facilitator. We are now at October 18th, 16th, and we still don't have any viable proposals or options before us. So I wanted to put it out there tonight for consideration, maybe at our next Wednesday meeting, that we talk about whether or not we would want to allocate some of the $100,000 set aside to bring in a facilitator to move us towards an actual project a bit more quickly. So it's an FYI at this point, and if other Commissioners would like additional information, I can try to get that before the Wednesday meeting so that it can be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Any comments from the Commission? Manager Burton, I wonder if, when we have that discussion, if we could also maybe get an update from the task or working group that was put together to work through what are some of the options and what all their position is on moving ahead with facilitator?
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, we can do that. Bring our Housing Coordinator in to update the Commission on, you know, where the group is relative to their discussions. And I guess they probably have additional information relative to a facilitator and the proposed request as well.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the report of the City Attorney.
Mayor Protem, Members of the Commission, I am pleased to report tonight that I do have a report. We received a decision on the Imperial Sovereign Court, Pride Montana versus City of Helena and State of Montana case. It was issued October 13th, which is this last Friday. Judge Morris issued a decision that would enjoin House Bill 359 from, enjoin the state from instituting, maintaining, or prosecuting any enforcement proceedings under House Bill 359. If you recall, that bill was commonly known as the Drag Show Bill or the Drag Story Hours Bill. It prohibited drag shows or drag story hours on public property, libraries, anywhere there was public monies received. The City of Helena was a party to that because it was considering a special events permit for the Pride Montana, which was issued, and the case was dropped against the City of Helena. But the decision itself is broad enough, though Helena is not a defendant, it's broad enough to apply to any city or any entity that would enforce House Bill 359 in Montana. So functionally, for now, House Bill 359 is done. I say for now because procedurally where it is in the case is that it was an injunction, a preliminary injunction, which means functionally that it would be preserving the status quo, which in this case would mean status quo without a new law. So it cannot, there cannot be any enforcement of a new law at this time while the merits of the case are considered. However, the decision, the substantive decision of the court was broad enough to, because it was found that the plaintiffs would be, and I quote, "likely to succeed on the merits of the case," so it doesn't leave a lot of room for defendants to actually challenge this case. What I mean by that is the court in issuing the injunction and citing a 1927 Supreme Court decision said, "Fear cannot alone justify suppression of free speech and assembly. Men feared witches and burnt women. It is the function of speech to free people from the bondage of irrational fears." And that was the Whitney versus California case in 1927 that the court cited to. I can't predict what the state will do in response. They do have the choice to proceed to the merits, to appeal to the Ninth Circuit on this decision right now, or drop the matter altogether, but I can report back to you at the time when I do know what the state will do on this case. And so unless you have questions, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, City Attorney. Are there any questions? Okay, we will move on to the report of the City Manager. Manager Burton?
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, I have a couple of brief reports this evening. You'll recall some weeks ago that the Commission approved that City Court participate in the Fine for Foods Program with Justice Court and, I believe, District Court as well. Through that program, the Court was able to relieve $2,110 in fines, and the food itself that allowed that fine to be reduced was donated to Helena Food Share. So I think it was a successful program. We let the Commission know that we'd report back when we had the results, and those are the results. And in addition to that, Mayor Protem, and I know that from time to time you all participated in the Montana League of Cities and Towns 92nd Annual Conference sponsored by the City of Helena last week. We had 460 municipal representatives in attendance, as well as 63 sponsors and 84 exhibitors. In total, there were 57 Montana municipalities represented at this year's conference. I gotta say that these events are a lot of work to put on. We had tremendous help from city staff in the city manager's office, the clerk's office. Byron Dyke and his team at the Civic Center did, I think, just a wonderful job. And we also had a lot of help from the Community Development Department, Transportation Systems, et cetera, and I think it was a very successful conference. With that, Mayor Protem, that concludes my report.
Thank you. I'd just like to note, I'm very grateful to all the city staff for participating and helping out in organizing the League Conference. I had multiple comments from folks around the state who thought they did such a wonderful job, and it was a great opportunity to show off all that Helena is and why we love it. Any comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I don't know if this is a standard thing, but I know that, for example, with the Olympics, they talk about the economic benefit to the host city or deficit in the case of the Olympics, but is there some sort of, like, rough number they give about, you know, how much business came into the city as a result of this conference? Just for our interest.
Mayor Protem, Commissioner Reed, I am sure that somebody has that number, and I'll look around to see if I can identify that and bring it back to answer your question.
Great. Okay, we will go ahead and move on to communications from the Helena Citizens Council. I believe we have Ms. Stephens on board.
Hi. My name is Susan Stephens, and I'm the District 7 Rep. And some of the things that we've been working on, we had Craig Worth come. He's from the Non-Motorized Travel Commission, and he came in and explained that we would like to do safe routes to schools, and we would like to approve that, and that the Citizens Council is behind that. He also mentioned that the roads, they didn't really want to widen the roads because that could cause more problems, so we were against widening up the roads that we have right now. And the bike routes, he specifically mentioned that those on the busy streets are really, really dangerous, so they're kind of looking at some other options for that. We also are looking for candidates for this upcoming election. As you well know, we're doing write-ins at this point, and I'm not sure which districts still need them. I'm, I think, four and five, or four and six for some, but I'm not sure. But we were looking forward to you working with the Commission to approve that. So, any questions?
There are questions from the Commission. One note that I, I think it might be worth consideration. I know that we'd gotten some feedback about sometimes they give difficulty in being able to engage with the HCC during a meeting when you all provide your report. And as you know, we can only comment based on what's on the published agenda. So I'd been brainstorming with a couple members of our staff, and I think it might be helpful if maybe we can start getting a written report prior to the HCC comment. And just for you all to consider, that way we actually have something that we, I think sometimes folks don't understand why we can't provide comment immediately, and it's because we can only have deliberation based on what is on the published agenda. And so this might be an opportunity for us to get a little bit more detail in writing and include it in our agenda. I'm sure the city manager's office and the clerk would be happy to work with you all to make sure it was submitted in a timely fashion so it could be published with our agenda. But I know we're gonna have some of these conversations when we head into not just the strategic planning, but the further discussions about procedural issues and interacting with the boards, including the HCCs, but I think that might be a good opportunity for us to kick that off so that you all feel we are responsive because we can respond then.
Okay, that'd be great. We only meet once a month, as you all know, but we certainly, if they can give us some guidelines of what they would like, we could probably get that published after the meeting and sent to you, so you would have it. That'd be great.
Great. Any other comments or questions for the HCC? Okay, we will go ahead and move on to regular items. First is regular item A, Consider a Resolution Allocating Additional General Fund Savings Created From Accepting the United States Treasury State and Local Recovery Grant Funds and Declaring All Grant Funds as Revenue Loss Used for General Government Services. Director Danielson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm standing in for Amanda Opitz this evening to present this resolution. At the Wednesday, September 23rd Administrative Meeting, the Commission proposed, or provided consensus and direction to staff to disburse $47,500 to the Helena Regional Sports Association to conduct a sustainability study for the proposed aquatic and recreation facility. Up until this point, the Commission has dispersed $7,131,320 of the original ARPA general fund savings that the city experienced. With this dispersment, that leaves $1,307,800 in that balance of general fund savings that are just sitting in reserves at this point for perhaps future deliberation. I do know that this item will come up at the next Commission Administrative Meeting for discussion as well. Tonight, we just have the resolution to disburse the funds to the Helena Regional Sports Authority. Happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I don't know if this question fits under the item, but I was wondering about the status of the funds that had been allocated prior to this one, and are there still contracts yet to be signed, or has all that money that we allocated previously started moving out? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Commissioner Reed. That is a very good question. We have several of the pending dispersments that we have not yet dispersed. I know that the dispersment to the Rocky Mountain Development Council has not happened for the Owl Redeemers Project. We have not distributed any funds to Helena Food Share. We have distributed some funds to Tri-County Fire Safe Program. They have been submitting dispersment requests. They're, all of the internal allocations, we have made those respective transfers to particular funds, like the capital fund and the water fund for the water treatment project. But I do know that Amanda Opitz, our grants administrator, is actively reaching out to organizations to ask them what the status is of requesting those dispersments from the city. And through that, we just recently dispersed the funds to the Last Chance Powell Association for their request. So she is actively working with the organizations to see what the status is of getting their reimbursements into the city. I'd like to get them in before the end of the fiscal year, if possible.
Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So just a quick follow-up. Would it be possible to get a quick overview of who has requested and who hasn't for the next admin or whatever meeting, just so we can sort of review and see where we're at?
I'm certain we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the Commission? Okay, seeing none, we'll, yes, Mayor?
Yes, Director Danielson, my question, what is the process that should be followed to, for those entities to receive their funding? Because this has been a while, and to hear that funds have not been dispersed is a little concerning. So maybe it's not from your side or from the organization's side. I just want to know, what's the process where they can request it and the allocation be made ASAP?
Thank you, Mayor and Mayor Protem. That's a good question. So each of the community dispersment requests had originally sent in an application for the funds with their intent on how they want to use the funds. We have set up through the City Attorney's Office agreements with most of those organizations in which they have signed, and part of that agreement, some of those agreements have actually come before the Commission for your approval before we get them signed off. Once the organization has entered into the agreement, they're then asked to submit drawdown requests with specific, you know, documentation on how they intend to spend or have already spent the funds, and then we then cut a check to them, and that has been the process to date. Manager Burton, did you have any other comments on that?
Mayor Protem, Director Danielson, I'd just add that as a part of the update in an upcoming meeting, we can, each of those organizations that you've allocated funds to, public funds to, were required to enter into a performance agreement with the city, and those agreements came back to the Commission for final approval. At that point, we can take those performance agreements that we've entered into and give you an update on the status of the projects at an upcoming meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain public comment. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Protem, I have no public comment online.
Okay, seeing no public comment, is there any final Commission discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Protem?
Commissioner Shirtliff?
I move to consider a resolution allocating additional general fund savings created from accepting United States Treasury State and Local Recovery Grant Funds and declaring all grant funds as revenue loss used for the general government services and to distribute an additional $47,500.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
And before we move on to item B, I understand that there could be a little bit of confusion. Mr. Mayor is not able to be with us in person, but as you can hear him, he is on Zoom, but that's why I am chairing in the chambers tonight, so to can clarify anyone who might have been confused. He is with us on Zoom land, but not in person. Okay, we'll move on to regular item B, Consider the Acceptance of the Montana DES State Homeland Security Program Grant to Enhance the Physical Security of the Helena-Louisson-Clark County 911 Communication Center. Chief Petty?
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, good evening. This is simply to consider the acceptance of the Montana DES State Homeland Security Program Grant to enhance our physical security of the Helena-Louisson-Clark County 911 Communication Center. That was a mouthful. Part of receiving this grant, this will allow for the purchase of cameras around the facility, a new intercom system, impact-resistant doors, separate door controller, and reinforcement of the exterior area that houses the generator. If you're not aware, the 911 Center sits out at the airport. It sits above the Rocky Mountain Fire Training Center. That building's been there for a while, and when we moved in in roughly, I believe it was February 2012, there were some updates done, some remodeling done, but nothing really of any substance has been done until now. So getting $40,000 from the Montana DES is quite the feat. Our program's manager, Chanel Waples, put in for the grant, did a good job sticking with it, and we were awarded that. So with a little bit of backdrop, project timeline on it, once approval is met, we will get, I think it should be within a year. It's generic. The airport staff out there will coordinate the construction from there. So my recommendation, our recommendation to the Commission is move to approve the Montana DES Homeland Security Grant Funding for our 911 Center, and of course, any questions, I'm here.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Chief. Is there any public comment? Madam Clerk?
Mayor Protem, I have no public comment online.
Okay, seeing no public comment, any final comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Protem?
Commissioner Logan?
I would move to approve the Montana Disaster and Emergency Services State Homeland Security Program Grant Funding.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, we will go ahead and move on to regular item C, Consider curb and gutter variance requests for 2211 Hauser. Dr. Knopki?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Commission. This is for 2211 Hauser. The owner of this property is applying to construct a fourplex at the corner of Hauser and Elizabeth. The owner plans to install sidewalks along both Hauser and Elizabeth, but at this time doesn't feel the curb and gutter along Elizabeth, since Elizabeth is an unimproved road, is, should be necessary. City Code 742, owners to build, requires the adjacent property owners to install curb- to install curb gutters and sidewalks. The, as I stated, the owner's requesting not to have the curb and gutter along Elizabeth due to the unimproved condition. Staff agrees, and we recommend approving this request.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? I did have one question. So, and this goes with this item and the next one. On these that are waiving the right to protest a future SID, because there is so much development happening in a few of these neighborhoods that are agreeing to waive their right to protest, I mean, do we have a timeline of what this might look like of when we do start implementing some of these special improvement districts, just given that they're fully developed neighborhoods at this point?
Mayor Protem and Commissioners, no, we don't have a timeline for specific SIDs across Helena. But that is why these waivers were having signed and recorded, so that, you know, memories sometime are short, and at least then, once that gets in place, they would be documented. It's going to be a big lift in the future to get some of these areas that haven't, that don't have improved roads from one level to the other, whether it's asphalt, curb and gutter, or all three, curb, gutter, sidewalks, and asphalt. So we'll be, we'll be looking at a plan to what this would look like in potential costs of an SID and bring forward to the commission at some point in the future, and just let the commission know what these kind of costs look like.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any public comment? Madam Clerk?
Mayor Protem, I have no public comment online.
Okay. Any final discussion from the commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Protem, I'd move to approve a curb and gutter variance along a waiver of protest, or excuse me, allowing a waiver of protest for any future SID to be signed in lieu of installation of curb and gutter along Elizabeth Street, excluding that portion of curb and gutter along the ADA curb ramp sidewalk extensions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Okay, we'll move on to regular item D. Consider curb and gutter variance request for 1918 Wilder Avenue. Director Knopki.
Mayor Protem and Commissioners, this is another property owner requesting a variance for curb and gutter installation. They're planning on installing, or building a single-family home at this location. The owner is planning to install sidewalks at the location, but again, the nature of the neighborhood lends itself not to install the curb and gutter at this time. The, in this case, the roadway was paved with the West Side Water and Sewer Project, but it was only paved to twenty-four, twenty-five foot width. And in keeping with the typical sections of the city, we would have to widen that out a little bit, so having them put curb and gutter up against this asphalt would require that curb and gutter to be removed at some point in the future when that area gets improved. So with that, the staff agrees and recommends approval of their request.
Okay, are there any questions or comments for Director Knopki? Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm not opposed to this, and I will vote in support of it. I just feel like I have to just comment that I worry a little bit sometimes with this sort of chicken and egg nature of variances and things not being improved and people not putting in sidewalks because it's not improved. And I do have some concerns that the patchwork nature of what we have right now with sidewalks and other things is sort of a result of this process. And I know you're aware of it, so I appreciate that. But I, you made a statement about having a plan for improving these areas and how that's all going to work, and I hope we can get to a place where we're looking at how to fit into a plan as opposed to, you know, reacting to a situation when we don't know what it's going to look like in the future, just because I think our city really is, it is, it is so different block to block. And I would love to see our roads and sidewalks get better. So I know you know this. I just needed to say it. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Director Knopki, thank you. I have to agree with Commissioner Reed. I don't make a habit of approving or voting in favor of variances. I agree with the patchwork nature of our sidewalk is, you know, it's, we've expanded, we have got different expansions that have happened. And of course, you've got the west side where some of these properties are, and it's kind of the wild west where some of the roads are 20 feet wide. Some of them are dirt roads or unimproved, and they've been annexed into the city. And looking at how do we address that to, so we're not infringing on people's properties, but also to making them safe for people, kids walking to and from school. But yeah, I will be voting in favor of this variance. But again, looking forward to having the conversations with you and with the commission regarding our sidewalks. Thank you.
And maybe just to clarify, Director Knopki, the next one is a sidewalk variance, but this one is just the curb and gutter.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Protem, Commissioner, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no further comments, I'll entertain public comment.
Yep.
Oh, Commissioner, Mayor, and then we'll get to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On the other hand, I sat in a meeting a while back, and we disapproved a variance that a homeowner wanted. And so I jog in that area, I think it would behoove us sometimes to go and look at the scene or look at the property that is requesting the variance, because every time I jog in that area, we disapprove, I cringe, because we should have approved that. I mean, it looks so bad that this is the only house in the whole neighborhood, and there's no way another sidewalk can get there. And so I advise that we look at some of these things, we physically look at these things for these variances, because some of them are legit, and we need to just pay attention to that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will now entertain public comment.
For the record, my name is Brian Copeland. When I used to serve on the Helena ADA Advisory Board, they had a transition project about how they were going to work with different sections in the community to upgrade them and to be ADA advisable. And of course, this was back in 2018 before the COVID crisis. So is there a way that we could kind of get an update on where we are in what they proposed back in the 2018 era, and whether or not they 've reevaluated that and we have a new framework to run by?
Thank you, sir. Is there any further public comment?
Mayor Protem, I have no public comment online.
Okay, any comments from the commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Protem.
Commissioner Logan.
I move to approve a curb and gutter variance, allowing a waiver of protest for any future SID to be signed in lieu of installation of curb and gutter along Wilder Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Okay, this is the final regular item. This is considering a sidewalk variance request for 1527 Jerome. Director Knopki.
Mayor Protem and Commission, the property owner at this location, 1527 Jerome, is applying for a building permit to construct a second floor and three-car garage with remodeling to the first floor of this residence. It resides on the southwest corner of Jerome and Harris. The owner is planning on installing sidewalks, but they feel that the installation requirement in 742 of one foot from the property line would require substantial grating and retaining walls. None of the properties on this block of Jerome and Harris do have sidewalks. There are, a block away, there are some sidewalk, and it's just at the corner, and they are curbside at the, at this moment in time. The south side of Jerome, as with a lot of the streets on the south side of town, are problematic for installation of sidewalks because of the elevation difference between the finished floor of the home and the street. And after visiting the site, it does appear that this would require significant retaining wall, especially along Jerome and a portion of Harris, with that with a pretty significant So the disadvantage of this placement of sidewalks, that they're requesting the placement to be at the back of curb, and the two disadvantages that staff sees is there's not the pedestrian separation that the boulevard and boulevard trees allows, and also the snow storage that the boulevards allow for during the wintertime is not there. But in light of the significant cost of the retaining walls and the nature of the neighborhood, if you look farther west, there's significant mature landscaping, there's driveways that have been in place for a number of years that if the boulevards were to be installed, would drastically impact those properties as well. So it's for those reasons that staff recommends approval of this sidewalk variance replacement, for placing the sidewalk on the curbside back of curb.
Okay, thank you, Director Knopki. Are there questions or comments from the commission?
Mayor Protem.
Commissioner Logan.
Thank you. Took a drive by this. This is one of those circumstances, I believe, that the mayor spoke to earlier. And looking at it in Google Maps here, it makes sense. So that's my perspective on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Logan. Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think, in line with what Commissioner Shertliff said, I do not typically like to approve variances on sidewalks. However, in this case, there will be a sidewalk. It's not the ideal sidewalk. So I think I will support it. I also, I run these streets all the time. I know the grades, and I understand that. I think to the extent that if we make this variance now and we move forward with sidewalks, we just have to be mindful that we are saying basically that whole street is going to have non-ideal sidewalks. And we need to plan for that, because again, I run in these streets, and in the absence of sidewalks, it's like an icy death trap for six months of the year. And if we're going to have not ideal snow storage, I think, again, I just want to make sure we all appreciate that the variance is going to save money to the homeowner, which is not insignificant, but it's also setting up pedestrian connectivity that's not great going forward. Thanks.
Just a question for you, Director Knopki. Is there any potential, so I'm less sympathetic to the variance due to cost, because I think that, you know, when you purchase a property and you know you're going to be making significant upgrades, bringing all things up, when you buy a piece of property in a lot of parts of Helena, we have a lot of steep streets, and that's the cost of doing business. However, the argument that I am more sympathetic to is the continuity piece and lack of connectivity that could result because of the other properties that are on the same street. And I know, in this area in particular, we frequently get comments or complaints about plowing and icy streets and snowberms blocking driveways. Is there any potential for a project like this to have a smaller boulevard that can actually facilitate the snow storage? Or is it curbside or not?
Mayor Protem and Commission, the existing hierarchy for complete streets in the city engineering standards does allow for the reduction of the boulevard to go down to four feet without commission approval. In this case, a four-foot boulevard is better than nothing, and it would provide some storage, probably not as much, but it would provide some. And then it would also provide that pedestrian barrier. Again, not the seven feet, but a little bit is better than nothing. But to your point of connectivity throughout the city, this homeowner is willing to install sidewalks to start that connection in that neighborhood, where if you take an aerial view of that area, there is virtually no sidewalks. So, but yes, there is the ability to reduce that width of the boulevard.
In your professional opinion, do you think that that, I mean, because of the neighbor, the existing topography, mature landscape, driveways, et cetera, is that smaller boulevard not, is that less doable on those houses?
Mayor Protem and Commission, I think there would be impacts to the adjacent, not only this property, but other properties on the south side of Jerome. And to what extent, you know, we didn't, we didn't evaluate that fully, but it would be pretty impactful, because some of them have concrete driveways that basically start at the top of their finished floor garage and slope directly down to the street itself now. So even putting in a five-foot sidewalk is going to push that back, and there's going to be a level spot for the sidewalk, and then the driveway would go back up. So I guess, any encroach, any, anything behind the back of curb is going to impact. It's just a matter of how much, how wide it is would define how much impact. Sorry, I can't be more succinct, but...
No, no. Okay, thank you. Any additional comments?
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Commissioner Shertliff.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Director Knopki, it was said that the cost of a normal sidewalk and also to a retaining wall, would this property be eligible for our sidewalk fund?
Mayor Protem and Commission, it would be for the corner lots. We have the maximum city contribution to make those monies go farther. So it would get the, if it applied and accepted the estimate, it would get that minimum allocation from the city. But the rest of it is borne by the property owner to make sure that we can make those monies go farther. Some of these corner lots can run, you know, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars, just depending on where they are and what has to be installed.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Okay, we'll open up to public comment.
Mayor Protem, Commissioner, I am one of the homeowners, my husband and I. My name is Brittany Garcia at 1527 Jerome, and we were like the first house in the whole street, as the director said, to renovate. And we're near the Capitol, and we want it to be beautiful. We've wanted to comply with sidewalks from the beginning. And, but we've also, we also realized that we're setting a precedence on the street, which you mentioned. And we, our topography is not great, but neither is the rest of the street. I mean, there are humongous trees, other rocks and slopes and stuff, and just out of, I don't know, to make it look beautiful, like we want to make our house look beautiful, but also eventually the whole entire neighborhood. And so it's, I also thought in my mind, I don't, I wouldn't want to see like a sidewalk that goes from the curb out a few feet to the property line and back to the curb, depending on the topography of that particular site. And so we're willing to work with you. We're going to have to retain, to install a retaining wall as it is. Even if we put the sidewalk on the curb, the slope is so... the slope is so, is so great that for a five-foot sidewalk, we're already going to be adding retaining wall. And then we're happy to do that. It wasn't an expense that we initially knew about. We're not from here and we weren't familiar with the codes. But I would just, I would recommend, ask for a variance because it seems like it'll be more consistent and more beautiful going forward.
Thank you ma'am. Any additional public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pro Tem, I have no public comment online.
Okay, any final comments from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you Mayor Pro Tem. I apologize, I had to step out and manage child for a moment. If there was to be a variation to the variance to require the smaller boulevard, what, procedurally, how would that work?
Yes, City Attorney.
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Reed, you would have to address the variance request first and potentially deny it if indeed you want to take another action. It sounds to me, and I would, I would look to Director Knopki about his comment about the not, the, in, not being necessary to actually come to the commission if there's a variance to four feet. And it may be, it may not be necessary for you to make an action after that.
Thank you. That was, that was my next question. I think I just asked it in the wrong order. So, the current variance approval would allow for a consideration of a smaller boulevard to maximize snow storage? Or to allow for some snow storage?
Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner Reed, the current one is to place it at the back of curb. The, in the complete street standards, there is allowances to narrow the boulevard to four or five feet, depending on the street classification, without commission approval. It's the removal, complete removal of the boulevard that requires the commission approval.
Thank you, sorry, last follow-up, just to make sure I understand. So, if I heard you correctly, you were saying that it, it may not be possible to do even the smaller boulevard all the way down the south side of Jerome? And that it would be possible that there would be sections that could do it and sections that could not do it?
Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, it's possible to do it along the entire length. It's just the impacts to the properties. Some would be less, lesser, and some would be more just by the nature of the, the properties and the difference in elevation from their finished floor to the street.
Which is also true for the total no-boulevard version. There's still going to be impacts.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any additional commission comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Commissioner Logan.
I move to approve a sidewalk variance allowing curbside sidewalk along Jerome Place and Harris Street.
Sir, second? Mayor is saying, second?
Second.
Second, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to one. Okay, that concludes our regular items. We will move on to public hearings. This is to consider a resolution to include parklet fees and adopt the schedule in its entirety to be charged by the Helena Transportation Systems Department. We have Mr. Kui.
Good evening Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. Mayor Collins, I won't leave you hanging out there in a virtual abyss. Tonight, we have, hopefully for the last time in a little while, a consideration for our parklet fee. The resolution, as written, just to try and keep us on topic a little bit, is to include the parklet fee and adopt the schedule in its entirety, focus being on include the parklet fee. Worked with my most prestigiously titled colleague over here, Attorney Doctor, to try and make sure that the language added, that we would add it into the schedule as it sits, and then have it in its entirety. So, do we want to put this up on the screen? How do we turn that thing on? Oh, is it online? Are we good? Yeah? Okay, so, again, to stay kind of to the point here, I know we've really talked parklets over and over. So, the highlighted numbers that you see on the, the handout that we had here, those three-dollar amounts are going to add up to the three-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars that we talked about in the last presentation that we had. Right, so that is, as you can see all these numbers, this is the challenge that we had before, of really trying to pull out to an individual parking space level versus taking the information from the accounting software. So, those three numbers add up to that three-hundred-and-seventy-two of the on-street. And the one that we really want to focus on is that bottom one that's fully highlighted, the three-hundred-and-twenty-five spaces for the kiosks, which are the spaces that are going to have these parklets occupying them. So, about two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of revenue in those. Do the math, about seven-hundred dollars per space per year. Throwing a little bit of common sense into it, right? The spots that are directly in front of the businesses, where the parklets will go, typically get the higher turnover rates and the higher revenue rates. Again, we can't give you exactly what each spot costs throughout the whole network, but, like I said, commonsense-wise, those spots where the parklets go are probably more in the eight-ish, hundred-dollar-per-year range. Spots that are going to be across the street and down the road, probably closer to six-hundred, averaging out around seven. So, if you do some of the math from there, what we've proposed in the schedule is, what I heard sounded like consensus from not only commission, but from the public that was in the room the last time we had a meeting, was that option two, which was seventy-five dollars per month per space. So, at six-point-seven-ish months in the season that we have identified for parklets, that would put you at about five-hundred dollars for the season per space. If you roll that into an entire year, puts it at about nine-hundred. But that was the option that sounded like everyone in the room wanted to go with, so that's the one that we included in the schedule tonight. So, that's all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you Mr. Kui. Are there questions from the commission? Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reed.
Just because it's not on the sheet, I want to make sure I'm, I'm getting it right. So, for a current parklet of four spaces for the season, it would be two-thousand dollars.
Correct.
So, that would be the most that they would pay with a four-space parklet, per season? And it wouldn't change if the season was shorter?
It would be prorated to the month based on how many months they had. So, if, if the season went longer and they wanted to open up earlier, it would probably be more.
So, the new fee would be per month, not flat fee per season?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Cool, it was very small print. I'm just making sure the public is aware. Okay, thank you, and this is really helpful. Thank you for putting that together. I know that was requested by members of the public, so I appreciate the work that went into that.
And maybe one clarification for me. The reason that we cannot determine how much each spot exactly makes is because the way our parking is set up is that everyone is under the five-nine-six-zero code when they enter it into the app or on any of the kiosks.
That's right, Mayor Pro Tem, yeah. It's, it's all basically, all these three-hundred-and-twenty-five spaces are assigned to the same code when they pay for the parking, yeah.
Great, thanks. Okay, any other comments from the commission? Is there any public comment? See, there is a hand online, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pro Tem, I have John Dendi online.
Mr. Dendi, please. Mr. Dendi? I see your microphone moving, but we cannot hear you.
Oh.
There we go, we hear you now.
Oh, hey, it was mostly just a thank you. So, Mr. Kui, Director Knopki, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for spending so much time on this. It may seem like a small percentage of the budget for the parking department, but it is a huge deal to the businesses who are doing this into downtown. And I think that the monthly charge is exactly what the businesses ask for. And I very much appreciate your work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Dendi. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Just one final comment for me. I'd like to just thank our staff for bearing with us as we worked our way through this. It was a number of meetings, and I appreciate the flexibility in coming back with additional solutions when we thought we had arrived at one a couple of months ago. So, really appreciate your consistent effort. Okay, there are no other comments. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Commissioner Reed.
I would be delighted to quickly look at his screen to make the motion because I don't have it in front of me. Thank you. I move to approve a resolution to include parklet fees and adopt the schedule in its entirety to be charged by the Helena Transportation Systems Department.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Just for the record, Mayor Collins apologizes he had to get offline.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero. Okay, great. So, now we'll move on. Is there any public comment, general public comment on any item not discussed tonight?
Greetings Commissioners. My name is Brian Copeland. I'm a community resource specialist and community organizer. I've been an advocate for about forty years in the community. And I have a couple of requests that I would like to discuss with the commission and the public at large. My first request for community consideration would be the Lewis and Clark County on their agendas for each of their agenda items. They have behind that the person who basically comes up and is the spokesman or the representative for that. Could you guys possibly add that to your agenda so that the community knows who it is that if they need to speak with them on that issue or who the expert is, that they have that confer, that contact information available to them? Because a lot of times at these commission meetings, it's, it, the people that are, are connected to that or have references to that, sometimes they're not able to come to the meetings or to participate because of other scheduling conflicts or things like that. So, it's a good way for them to know who it is to communicate so that they can be more interactive and more involved. So, that would be kind of like one of my first requests. The, the second one is, I do lots and lots of work with the most vulnerable community, our, our most vulnerable communities, like Montana Independent Living Project or, or, you know, a lot of organizations like that. So, during the COVID crisis, I mean, my life's really ironic because I used to push Zoom technologies so that the handicapped people could participate so that, like, when they were given testimony before the legislators, that they wouldn't have to come all the way from billings and stuff like that so that they could get Zoom access and that we could record what they had to say so that they didn't have to go through all the barriers to get there. So, now, we're on the opposite end of the spectrum. We don't see the faces of the most vulnerable because most of the times, they're not able to participate. So, my second request would be, like these boards and committees, like the ones that I used to serve on the ADA Advisory Board, and I used to serve on the Behavioral Health Local Advisory Council too. But, since I was in the field all the time, dealing with the people that were in the middle of crises, I couldn't be in two places at the same time. So, is there a possible way that we can get back to these hybrid meetings so that these people can actually attend in person again? I've had a lot of requests from people like at the Montana Independent Living Project who need to get their voices to be heard and to be allowed to participate in becoming more civically engaged for them and also so that they can speak firsthand about what the barriers are that they're encountering. So, that would be my second request, is that we get these hybrid meetings back so that people can attend to them, attend them in person again? You guys ready for my third request? Okay, my third request is, we have a really serious issue in our community with black mold. And, you know, we, we have these problems in our community with the housing. And an even more greater problem is unsafe housing. And, as an example, in 2016, I was down at the local tavern, and I was talking with some of my volunteers, and we were talking about the black mold problem. And as I'm talking to him, the bartender comes over and says, "I have a black mold problem." And then there were some people just over on the other side that said, "We have a black mold problem." And a group on the other side said, "We had a black mold problem." So, just me talking about this and bringing it out and realizing that all these people that could hear us all had the same issue, makes me realize, man, we have a black mold problem here in our community that needs to be addressed. So, as a possible solution, could you guys talk to your county, or the city health department and talk to the county health department about organizing a black mold task force so that we can start to work on this problem? Because if we don't work on it, this little molehill of black mold is going to turn into the Himalayan mountain range. So, let's deal with it when it's a small problem and manageable before it gets to be a huge problem. Because I know what black mold poisoning can do. I had to live in a place with black mold poisoning for two and a half years, and the spores got into my lungs and got into my bloodstream. And see this stuff on my face? That's from black mold poisoning. And it attacks your joints, it attacks your muscles. It's a terrible thing. It's like, it's like, it's like cancer. So, we need to get a task force. We need boots on the ground to start dealing with this problem. Are we ready for request number four?
Yes, and if you could start wrapping up as well, please.
Okay. So, my request number four is, there's something called the Access to Communications Program. And when COVID first hit, our global government and our federal government basically sent an order to the states to say shelter in place. Then the counties basically told the cities, shelter in place. Well, all these people that had no shelter, what are they supposed to do? I mean, they couldn't shelter in place, they had nowhere to go. And I was activated at this point in time, even more than I usually was, to get out there and to start helping all these people because nobody was helping them. They were all left to fend for themselves. They were all isolated in their own little crises. And the whole system came to a complete stop. And there's these programs out there called the Access to Communications Program, which puts phones in the hands of people who don't have phones. And we moved to a phone-calling system for the, like, Montana DPHHS. So, everybody had to call in, and if you had no phone, you had no way to call in. If you had no internet net access, you couldn't go and go on to job service and post your qualifications for, for a job. And a lot of people lost their jobs during the COVID crisis. So, we've, so the telecommunications industry has been subsidized in ways, and they're also supposed to be putting part of their profits aside so that people that can't afford phones can get one. in their hands. Now, there's a bunch of predators out there that are preying on our most vulnerable population. And so you can go like on Facebook, and you can see all of these phony ACP programs that people are signing up for because they think they're legitimate. And they're putting their personal information in there, and it's being stolen. And so these predators are taking advantage of these people that are thinking, hey, this is what I need. I need a phone. I need to be able to communicate. So I met recently with an employee at Rocky Mountain Development Council, and I've been working with him closely to, to figure out which ones are legitimate and which ones aren't. And we're still working in the process. But we need help with this process, too. And eventually, we're going to get to a point to where this person can train the trainers so that when, when individuals come in and they don't have a phone and they come into our place, or they come into Montana Independent Living Project, or any of these places that are providing them with this service, that they can immediately get these people phones with a legitimate organization. Because the people that are being left out need to have a way to communicate. And without that, I mean, we're losing people. Our, we're in such a deep crisis that we, we have an addiction problem in a way. And the only way that you, the first step in recovery from addiction process is one, to admit that you have a problem. And once you admit that there's a problem, then the recovery can start. And so we need to work together to figure out what these problems are, remove the barriers, so that we can begin the recovery process. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments? Just really briefly, just to address some of the pieces, we do have the individuals who are presenting the items listed in our memos. So when you open up the agenda underneath the from, under each memo for each item, it does include who will present that item and is the content expert on that particular topic. The other piece I just wanted to note was that when we recently updated our advisory committee bylaws, it included all meetings needing to be in a hybrid format. So many have been on Zoom, but we are requiring that our, our advisory boards are in a hybrid format, just like ours. And then the final piece that I just wanted to note for you, earlier, there were the comments about the ADA Transition Plan. I know Director Knopfki could probably provide more information later on, but that is something that has continued to be in our budget and was quite, I would refer you to our sidewalk summits because there was quite a bit of discussion about that transition plan during that. Okay, any final comments or questions from the Commission? All right, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.